...of the City Commission for November 19, 2014. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. I just wanted to indicate that I've usually gone by that clock up there, but our city recorded to be, it depends on punctuality and wants to go by satellite time, so that's why I was continuously referring to my cellphone here. So I started promptly at 7:00. Would you please join me in the flanks?
[laughter] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of weeks ago, our Metro Councilor had learned, she was scheduled to speak at that time, she called me up that morning, I think, or maybe the evening before. I couldn't understand a word she said, and I didn't know who she was. But I finally figured it out, and she has come back, and I understand she is speaking fine. So Carlotta Colette, will you come forward? She's going to give us our, is it a quarterly report, or more frequently than that, I think?
Some cities, it's quarterly, some cities, not so frequently, so I don't keep track. I just try to get here when I can.
Very good.
And I did want to say, I think this is probably going to be my last report before this council and this mayor, and I just want to thank you so much for your service. You've been a tremendous council, a tremendous mayor. Mayor Neely, you've just been a wonderful partner, a great regional player. It's just been such a pleasure to work with you and with all of you, particularly the Blue Heron Project. It happened on your watch, you took it as far as you possibly could, and it's really exciting that we'll be continuing. But also, Kanema, and there's a whole lot of stuff that we've been able to work on together, so it's been a tremendous pleasure on my part.
And I would like to say likewise, you've come to us, I mean, it's not a criticism of anybody else, but you've come to us on a very frequent basis, and my years, 16 years serving on the City Commission, more frequently than any of our former councilors. And also, you have been to participate in every one of our Metro Enhancement Fund dispersal meetings that we have, so.
And those are some of the toughest meetings.
Yeah, those are the toughest meetings. So that...
Okay, well, let me kick right into the biggie right now. As you know, Metro has the responsibility to do the land use planning for the region, and we do this, in the past, it's been every five years, but with the grand bargain last year, it will go to every six years, starting in the next round. What we do is, we have to forecast how many people we think the region will have in the next, over the next 20 years, how many jobs we think we'll need. Then we look at your plans and the plans of all the cities in the region, and how many people you've kind of planned for. We try to see whether we're, we have enough land. So that's the Urban Growth Report, which is out right now for public comment. Metro Council will probably accept that report in December. That's not adopting it, it's not saying that it's 100% accurate, it's just saying, "We got it," and we want to use that as the basis for the next round of planning, and we expect people to comment and let us know if they think it's accurate or not, and we're already getting a lot of feedback on it. The next process, then, once we have the Urban Growth Report in hand and have pretty much got agreement on it, then we decide whether or not the region will need to expand the UGB, Urban Growth Boundary, in 2015. And that process will take place all next year. I'm going to be doing a much more deep and extensive presentation on the urban growth process at the Oregon City Business Alliance this week, so I didn't put all the slides in here. I figured this is probably enough. You're not, I mean, you're not likely to want to grow in 2015, although the region is looking at you to see whether you can actually develop the land that you have, that's been difficult to annex. So Oregon City is certainly a player in this next urban growth decision. I wanted to just bring you up to date on a couple of other big projects around the region. We have two big corridor planning processes going on right now, and these are multi-jurisdictional. This one, I think, has parts of eight cities in the southwest that have been working together to do their land use planning, their comprehensive plan changes, and transportation to solve what most of us think of as the congestion along 99E and Barber Boulevard. So they are moving towards narrowing down to one or two alternatives.
You've got 99E.
Oh, 99W, sorry. 99E's yours. 99W, I don't get over there often enough, I guess. But Barber Boulevard, that does not mean that whatever is planned will happen on Barber Boulevard or 99W, but that's the corridor. It's a fairly broad swath of land. They will be narrowing it down and going into a draft environmental impact process soon. Similarly, there's a large corridor planning process underway through Powell Division. This is another corridor that has a lot of congestion and a lot of growth. So they have narrowed down their alternatives, they're looking at probably a bus rapid transit option in that corridor, again, not necessarily on Powell or Division, but likely to be some of, maybe some of each, it's not really clear at this stage. But that's also a multi-jurisdictional process, it's pretty exciting to keep our eyes on. Climate Smart Communities is another big process that Metro's been involved in, and Mayor Neely has been your representative on those committees. On November 7th, we had our third and final joint meeting of the Transportation Planning Committee and the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. That group, that combined group, has given us this mandate of, not a mandate, but a strategy that basically goes a little bit beyond what's already in all of your comprehensive plans and your transportation system plans, mostly in terms of doing the kinds of roads and bike paths and those things that are in your plans, but probably adding more transit. And with that, we can actually beat our target of 20% reduction, go all the way to 29% reduction. The big question mark here is, can we really, will we be able to raise the funds? So what we're hoping is that we can go back to the legislature and say, "You told us to do this, we did it, we can meet your targets, but now you have to help finance transportation." And we hope that this will be something we can take to the 2015 legislative session and say, "It's been a while since you put big bucks into transportation, 2009 was the last big one, and so this may be an opportunity." River Island Restoration is one of the top priority projects that came out of the levy that we passed in 2013 to restore natural areas. This is a park that actually was given to Metro, well, I'm not sure that they donated it, but they made it available to us, I suspect we paid some for it, but it was an old gravel pit that got washed out when the Clackamas River flooded. The goal with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and local fishers is that this could be a huge salmon spawning area and salmon fishing area. So we're working at trying to restore that, it's, as I said, a big priority. We're going to do it in phases because the river's not stable, it's a river, and it floods, and we don't want to spend millions of dollars putting in something that gets washed out the next year. So we'll take kind of incremental steps and do something, see how it survives a couple of heavy seasons, take the next step. Scouter's Mountain opened this summer, August 28th, it was wonderful, it's a 100-acre park. If you haven't been up there, I would encourage you to get up there, it is really quite beautiful. The views from up there are pretty hard to beat. It was closed during the bad weather last week, but we, and it takes a while for it to open because it is a mountain, and it's also kind of on the shady side, the driveway's on the shady side, so it didn't melt as quickly as other parts of the region, but it is open again now. And there's a couple of really nice small hikes that are really worth the walk.
Could you tell us just where that is?
Oh, sure, it's in Happy Valley, if you go past, well, you go on our website, orgmetro.gov, and find a map to it, but the way to get to it is usually to go past City Hall, that, I think it's 100 and, can't remember the street.
122nd.
122nd, is it?
And then they turn on...
And then you turn on Boy Scout, it's still called something like Boy Scout Road, but I Google it. You can get it if you Google either Scouter's Mountain or Boy Scout Camp.
Yeah.
I think Google still has it as a Boy Scout camp. And there's, one of the nice things about the walk, just to go back to that for a second, Councilor Morrow on the Happy Valley City Council lost his son a couple of years ago, and contributed a lot of money to help put art in this park in honor of his son. So then Metro matched him, and North Clackamas Parks also matched, and we ended up, and I think Happy Valley put money into it, we ended up having five pieces of art that are on benches throughout this mile, mile or so trail that's around the top of the park. So if you do hike, keep your eye out for these pieces of art, they're fairly subtle, they're on these benches, and the idea was that you could stop here, and from the artist's perspective, is you can share the bench with the art. And so it's the idea that you're sharing nature with nature. Newell Creek Canyon, we are moving ahead, we had another wonderful open house, October 28th, the mayor was there, I think many of you were there, again, well-attended, around 80 people, I think, were there. Pie usually gets people out.
Yeah.
But in this case, people love Newell Creek Canyon, and we are hearing very strongly that this community, and the whole region really, is looking at Newell Creek Canyon as the spectacular place that we know it can be. So we'll be moving forward with that. We did buy that 12-acre parcel to provide an entryway to it, because we've been kind of going in behind the Nautilus Club there, and that's not a good entrance to the park, and so we will be building an entrance over, off of Molalla. And I wanted to add, I put in a slide here about Clackamas Community College, they also got a grant from Metro, one of the capital grants for $868,000, which they are matching, they're trying to find matches. I'm very happy that the bond passed, because I think a piece of that money can go towards this, but they're also going to the state for funding. And that's actually the headwaters of Newell Creek Canyon. So they're going to be handling a lot of the storm water and doing natural cleaning of the storm water, that will help make the canyon itself a much more stable environment. And then the John Innskeep Environmental Learning Center will be also really highlighted as part of that grant. I wanted to throw this slide, and these are new, we're doing maps of kind of the, where the parks and natural areas investments are in each of our communities. So I don't have my glasses on, and I can't really tell you what everything is here, hopefully you can tell, but the, there are different colored dots, and some of them are Metro grants, and some of them are your own parks.
Yeah.
The dark green areas are generally Metro-owned lands in your community, and I think that some of them are also parks that you, that are part of your own community park system. But you can see, we're very invested in Oregon City, and across the river and the Narrows there, just upstream, this is a really important part of our regional habitat, and some of the most spectacular parks we have really are in Oregon City. You are very blessed here. That's why I like to come here all the time. Nature and Neighborhoods, again, we gave out over a million dollars this year, and District 2 did fairly well. Not quite as well as we did last year when we, I think, got about $900,000 of the million in District 2, I was very excited. But we did do well, we have a number of parks, as you can see, that we will be getting restoration grants for. And then I don't have to tell you, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, I was going to give this presentation the night that you were adopting, and you adopted, and I thank you for that, it was, it's, this is really the kickoff, this is the turning point for this project. We have met now, or we've met once and did a tour with the Friends Group of Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Our staff was meeting today, I think, or tomorrow, with folks from Willamette Falls Heritage, not the Area Coalition, but there's another of the Willamette Falls groups down here, to see if they would be the fiscal organization for us to go in as a nonprofit and start collecting money that will go towards the River Walk. So I'm very excited to get that underway, because people have been telling me, "Where can I give money to this project?" And I'm, you know, I'm ready to start collecting checks and making those calls. Solid Waste Roadmap, again, this is where we're kind of taking a big look at how the whole regional solid waste system is operating. And a part of that is the South Transfer Station, a part of it was the Enhancement Fund that we approved a couple of weeks ago, so that will be doubling, which means more money to give away for grants in this community, I'm excited about that. But we'll be talking, we just had a work session where we looked at some of the alternatives for the redesign of South, Metro South Station, and the ideas to keep it in its current footprint, basically, are on that current site. I know there were some rumors that we were going to get rid of the Wetlands, not happening, and I called Jerry Herman myself to let him know that, because he was very concerned.
Rumors, don't you know that?
Rumors, rumors, Metro's going to put a road through the Wetlands. No, they're not, we are not, it's, the site will be expanded, but onsite. There's one possibility of maybe building a self-hall center somewhere close, but I think that that's not the likeliest of the options, and it would not be in the Wetlands. In fact, not knowing where it could be is part of the problem, and we're more likely to keep with an onsite solution.
The Wet, correct me if I'm wrong, but actually, you did some great work there at the Wetlands itself, that served as your stormwater facility, and it's a very nice site.
It's very nice, and people don't know about it. I didn't know about it until Jerry brought it to my attention and gave me a tour, it's a sweet place, it's quite a nice little walkway, a good place to just go and be quiet.
A lot of bullfrogs, but other than that.
A lot of bullfrogs, exactly, I noticed that myself. We just held the Let's Talk Trash Film Contest, and this was amazing, you know, people come out for, I was worried that we wouldn't get a lot of people out for this film, we had this gala film night, I couldn't go because I was at another, I did one of my city council updates, but we had over 200 people, it was standing room only, it was the biggest event that the Film Center has had as part of their special feature film, so we had more people come out to watch films about garbage than anything else. And who won? I don't know. You have to go to the website, do you know who won?
No, we were actually talking about the Navigat of the library.
Oh, good.
It would be a great entry.
Yeah, yeah, we had five, we had five finalists that were presenting, including one from Gillum County. Oh, I think, I think the winner was the one, there's no away. I think that was the winner, which is one of the phrases I use all the time, because people are always saying, "Just throw it away," and I always say, "There is no away." Away is just somebody else's yard. So I would encourage you to go to this website.
Well, you're right, that is true.
Yeah, I mean, people keep saying, "Oh, they'll just haul it away." They'll just, you know, it's just going to be, garbage just disappears.
Well, it'll be out of our sight, so.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I pay to have it picked up on the street, I shouldn't have to worry about it from there on.
Yes.
If you've ever been to a landfill site, you worry. Even Gillum County, where it's high and dry and we can handle it pretty well, I happened to be there one day when all the plastic bags blew loose of the garbage and landed against the fence, which is 30 feet high and is supposed to contain that stuff, and it blew down.
Oh.
Because it's also a very high wind area. So there is no away, it's someone's problem, no matter where your garbage lands. So we're really working through this whole Let's Talk Trash campaign to get people to think more responsibly, not just about how you throw things away, but what you buy. Are you really going to use it? Does it really need that packaging? Those are the kinds of questions we're asking people to really think about, especially as we're coming into Christmas.
Yeah.
So there's, this is an opportunity to really think about what we're putting into the ground on our planet, in eastern Oregon, in this case, and actually, all around the region now, we have a number of other landfill sites. Quick update on the Portland Centers for the Arts, I know folks here remember that Metro manages all of the performing arts centers for the city of Portland, so when we do Broadway shows, it's our staff that are bringing those troops to town and are helping to set up and stage them, and they have some of the best jobs in town, they get to meet everybody who performs at the Schnitz, and it's really a lot of fun. But we have, you missed Tony Bennett, I told them to take that off, it's going to break your heart that you missed Tony Bennett. But at the Keller Mamma Mia is coming, November 25th through the 30th. At Expo, we, again, moved down to the Quilt and Craft Show this weekend, and America's Largest Christmas Bazaar, November 28th through the 30th, and December 5th through the 7th, out at Expo. And that's it, I couldn't believe it, they didn't put a zoo picture. There it is.
It went too fast.
I moved too fast, no, I said the last time I did one of these, and someone had taken out my zoo picture. This is really an important picture, because this is the biggest amount of construction we will have onsite at the zoo, thanks to the bond measure that we passed in 2008. This is Elephant Lands, it's taking up a huge amount of the zoo, you can see the little tiny concert stage and concert ground. Everything else on here is Elephant Lands, the new Elephant Lands.
Oh, that's...
And the building is humongous, it had to be 10 feet taller than we thought it was going to be, because Tusker, our big boy elephant, the big guy, can actually reach 45 feet into the air, and so they had, they made it 45 feet tall. So it's a huge space, and again, if you're interested in coming up for a tour, construction site tour, behind-the-scenes tour, to meet the baby tiger lions, the lion cubs, you're welcome to come up, just give me a call and I'll arrange a tour. And also, behind-the-scenes tours on any of the theaters, I'm happy to arrange those tours as well, just to see how things are done behind the scenes. And we are now in design on the new Zoo Education Center, which will be, where all the conservation education that Metro has been doing on solid waste, parks, natural areas, and then all the zoo conservation education will all be focused and concentrated at that building, along with folks like Audubon and others who'll be doing their classroom classes out of that new building. It's going to be gorgeous, and we're starting construction on that, I think, next year. And Zulites is starting.
Yes.
Very cool, new route, some new stuff, they've spiffed up the trains, they're really gorgeous. And that's the end. So any questions, or?
I have a question. Commissioner Rock? I was in a meeting today, planning the Portland safety stuff for next year, and one of the things that really concerns me, and I've noticed some Metro things too, they're always giving away things like bags and pens and hats and t-shirts, and I don't want any more stuff, and it's also contributing to the landfill.
Right.
And to my trunk being full of bags.
Thank you, thank you for the feedback, I know, when we first came up with the bags, it was really the idea was, use these bags, don't use plastic bags at the grocery store. Most of us now have 10 or 20 of these, so.
Yeah.
I have the different colors for every day.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
So thank you, point well taken.
Before we say a whole lot, we've got to do something about our teddy bear parade, where kids walk off with a half a bag of candy off the streets all the time, which isn't the best thing for them to have.
Ooh.
So.
Weren't you just eating like M&amp;M's like crazy in the back room?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Scrooge.
Yeah. Don't take that candy away from kids, come on now.
It had peanuts in stock.
And no wrappers, and no wrappers on it.
The health food part, right? Whatever.
Well, I can speak for myself, I've really appreciated all the updates that you have come and done for us, you have been a great Metro Councilor person.
Thank you, it really is my pleasure, you have a great community here, I love it.
We get the close-up, and even if our eyes aren't that good, we can see those maps, and it's really important to know that we just have this continuum of open spaces that's opening up. Of course, we talked about getting the trail system, the access to the falls, but the connection, ultimate connection, we hope, to the, to our area there along the Kanema Bluff, and then extending on into, into that beautiful Willamette Narrows area. So I think the opportunities for some great trail activities here in Oregon City along the Willamette are going to be coming up, and that's, we're all looking forward to that.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's nice continuity for us, because we can then bicycle or walk, but the connectivity for the wildlife is even more important, that they can actually be in a natural area for, you know, much larger amount of their migrations than in the past. So keeping these places natural and keeping them beautiful and restoring them is, it's an important legacy that we're all leaving.
So the cougars we occasionally see in Kanema might come further into the city.
There's that.
There is that to look forward to.
I live on Johnson Creek Canyon, and I know I'm getting animals in the backyard that I never had before, so.
I just want to express my appreciation for our partnership together with Metro, because in the, I've been on the commission the shortest amount of time, and within that time, there's been the Kanema Bluff area, and the improvement to the children's park, which, you know, connects that, and then Newell Creek Canyon, and it's just, it's amazing, and am I missing something? There might be something else, well, of course, Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
There's that.
There is that.
But that's going to go on and on, and it's just, it's great to have that partnership and pool our resources and our thinking and work together on that, so thank you, thank you.
And she did mention, and it is, it's an important piece, the dealing with the headwaters and the stormwater, the natural stormwater system, those they'll be producing, there are the community colleges too, that the grant was given for, so.
They're a great partner for the city and for Metro, they are really going to do a great job up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, and partial, since I was on the Board of Education.
Were there any comments coming to you that were dealing with her presentation at all? Okay. With that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, I've got a proclamation to read here. Whereas Bi-Local Oregon City seeks to bring, local Oregon City is a group, local Oregon City seeks to bring the local community together to support economic vitality and quality of life in Oregon City, and wishes to celebrate the independence of the citizens of Oregon City and the entrepreneurial spirit represented by our core of local independent businesses, and whereas the individual decisions every community member makes today affect the future of Oregon City, and whereas Oregon City's local independent businesses help preserve the uniqueness of the community and gives us a sense of place, and whereas Oregon City's core of independently owned businesses give back to this community in good services, time, and talent, and whereas the health of Oregon City economy depends upon our support of businesses owned by our friends and neighbors, and whereas Oregon City's independent business owners and employees enrich community members' shopping experiences with their knowledge and passion, now therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim the week of November 28th through December 6th, 2014, as Oregon City Bi-Local Week, and salute our community members and locally owned independent businesses to our integral, to our unique flavor of Oregon City, and honor their efforts to make Oregon City the place we want to live and work. And with this, I'm going to head and sign this document this day, 19th day of November 2014, and I would like to invite the members of, who are here, of local Oregon City, to come forward and say a few words if they wish to. Is there anybody that wishes to do so?
Come on.
Do you wish, do you wish, do you wish to stand? Would you please stand?
Stand if you recognize.
Thank you.
And if you...
And the chamber.
Amber's not so bashful.
Come on, Amber, come on up, Amber.
That's fine, we'll do it.
I think they know who you are.
Amber Holbeck, Director for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and a proud partner in the Bi-Local Oregon City effort. I just want to remind our city commissioners that back in August, we had challenged all of you to use your personal devices, take pictures of yourselves, or have someone help you take pictures while you are doing your Christmas shopping, your gift shopping, make sure that you are posting it. Let's make this a great social media opportunity to say, "Look, we're putting our money where our mouths are, and we are walking the talk." So let's just blast it out there.
Good reminder, thank you.
You are welcome, and thank you very much.
No, because we would make another copy, would any of you want this copy of the proclamation or not?
The original.
I absolutely think so.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I'll come forward and present it. I think, Ms. Park?
And Mayor Neely, one other great piece, that's a super tie-in with the whole Bi-Local Oregon City effort, and this proclamation is the first-ever snowflake raffle that is a joint effort between our Downtown Oregon City Association and our Bi-Local Oregon City efforts, and so I know you can find all of that information on the downtown website, which is?
DowntownOregonCity.org.
DowntownOregonCity.org. So be sure to check it out, and for every $25 that you spend with one of the participating merchants, you will have a ticket entry into a great, big bonanza of dollars to spend.
Woo, I like that.
That's great.
All right.
Pick me, pick me.
Thank you.
Who might make this presentation?
Amber.
I think Maureen needs to...
Okay, Maureen, Maureen Parkin, here you are, I know you're the one that I've been in email communication to about this. I know you're the one that I've been in email communication too about this. So, very good.
Thank you very much.
One, two, three, four, five.
Microphone down.
Microphone off. Turn that microphone off. What do you think?
With that, we have the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything?
Citizen comments.
Oh, citizens' comments, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. William Gifford.
Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. And the weather reports the last few days, talking about the Arctic blast coming down and freezing us all out. And, you know, it wasn't quite as bad as I thought it was going to be. But I, I had to extend a note of appreciation to our Public Works Department, whom I consider is the third leg of our three-legged stool of protecting this community, of our Fire District, our Police Department, and our urban, and our Public Works Department. Because without them keeping our roads clear and safe, that none of the rest of our facilities would be able to function at all. And I just think we, we often forget what a vital importance Public Works does for our community in keeping us safe. And I just want to say that I, I really appreciate the work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the adoption of the agenda, anything, any piece that anybody wants to pull?
I would like to pull MP 1303. On number eight. What is that?
I'm not sure. I'm sure I can find it.
Eight B.
Oh, eight B.
It's under eight B, MP 1303.
I, I think it's kind of, because I think often we don't get them this often, and people, a lot of people don't know what the restrictive covenant of non-monstrance is. I do, but it's going to be a benefit to anybody here who's in the next commission, and I know we got a person that is one. We see these occasionally. So we'll pull that for discussion.
Thank you.
With that, then, we're going to go into public hearings, continuance of the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyer Road corridor plan. And we'll go to John Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. So we just had a work session on this item, so it should be fresh in your mind. We brought this before the City Commission on September 17th, and at that time, we asked for a continuance until tonight. And in the interim between that, those two months or that period of time, we've been working with Wallace Engineering and David Evans, or Wallace Engineering and DKS Engineering to kind of look at some of the concerns. This is specific to the intersection of Lynn, Leland, Warner Parrot, Warner Milney, Central Point, that conglomerate of intersections and streets. And there was some concerns raised by some of the neighboring property owners about the proposed roundabout being the only solution. And so we, we've thought about that, and we want the best corridor plan that we can come up with. And so tonight, we're asking you for another continuance so that we can actually amend Wallace's contract, which is also on your consent agenda, to incorporate some study work that would look in much more detail at that intersection and look at several options for, besides a roundabout, as to how we might deal with that intersection. And then bring all that back and wrap that into one complete corridor plan that includes the recommendations for the intersection. So that's, so we're asking for a continuance until April 15th, and we'll use that time wisely and bring you back a discussion. There's also, one thing I didn't mention in the work session, in that scope of work with Wallace, there's a fair amount of community involvement as well. So we'll be trying to share that information, even though we've done a lot of sharing of information about the corridor itself, it'll be more specific to the intersection, so.
I think, I think there needs to be a lot more public discussion. We don't have many roundabouts here in Oregon City, but it is a very challenging intersection. I use it now every day, at least once. And it is an area on Central Point where a lot of the current growth, residential growth is occurring in the city. So it's going to become more and more challenging, so we have to find a solution to that. Do I hear a motion for a continuance?
There's several speakers.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was for 7:00 A.M.
Right.
There's now.
We'll watch it. Do we have speakers coming up?
Yeah, William Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. The crux of this whole corridor plan seems to be focused on the, on the, that particular intersection, the five-way intersection. And I think that it's, I think most people really understand that I am very pro roundabouts for lots and lots of reasons. But I want to make sure, I'm also very pro-business. And I want to make sure that any design that is done to that roundabout should only be done to enhance accessibility to those businesses, particularly the plebantry that are there. I want to make sure that, of course, safety is our number-one concern. But I think that the access to that facility and the church, you know, and all the existing businesses that are there have to be really, really seriously given a very high priority. The, the safety, the, the environmental impacts of roundabouts, all the additional things. I did see recently, I was up in Lacey, Washington, visiting my in-laws, and driving through there and over into Olympia, they have, they have an enormous amount of roundabouts in that region. And they have just found how, my brother-in-law works for the Department of Ecology, Washington has a Department of Ecology, something that Oregon doesn't, but I think he's head of that department. But the, one of the intersections that I saw was unique in the fact that it had the center part, you know, generating planters and stuff like that, and then the, and the roundabout outside of it. But in the middle, there was like a bricked passageway. And I asked specifically, why is that shoulder so wide? He says, that's for accessibility for larger trucks.
That's the way we have it. We have one too.
Yeah, and I think that's really brilliant, that they, that they take into consideration emergency vehicles and truck clearances and like that. And, and I know that one of the concerns of, of the businesses at that intersection that we're talking about, the five-way intersection, is accessibility of delivery trucks and access into those businesses. And I just want to make sure that that is, that is really high on the priority, is access to those businesses.
I think this is one of the reasons for that extended continuance, is to look at, I mean, you have, we had the one model before us, and the intent is to look at that, other models very seriously and to meet as much of that concern as we possibly can.
I just want to make sure the businesses are, you know, right under safety. Safety is first, after that is businesses.
Thank you. So do I have a motion for the continuance through April 15?
Yes, I would like to move 14-625 for the continuance of the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyers Road corridor plan.
A second?
Second by Commissioner Roth, and vote please. So with that, we're going to go into our general business. We have it as a first and second readings of ordinance 14-1018, adopting changes to the pavement maintenance utility fee of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 1330. Just for your information, if a, if, if a motion does not pass unanimously on the first reading, you cannot go to a second reading today. And so that's just for information purposes. With that, we'll go into a staff report.
Right. Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners, for taking the time to listen to this item. So it's not very often that we get to talk about our pavement maintenance utility fee, or what we call PMU. So I'd like to just start by acknowledging how successful we think this program really is. When the City Commission adopted this ordinance back in 2008, they had every intention of seeing that money focused specifically on our streets and our walkways, well, not our walkways, but our, our street systems.
Streets.
And transportation systems, and pavement, thus the name pavement maintenance. So that program's been very successful, and we see other agencies looking to our program to model their programs after. So we're, we feel good about that. We do annual reporting of our accomplishments, and we post that information on the web, just winding down from a summer construction season. We've done, we've done a lot of pavement maintenance. We've actually replaced some ADA ramps, which are mandated requirement that we do that. And so it's just an overall good program, and we hear a lot of community feedback that's positive with regard to that. So I just wanted to plug that system, and if you have any questions about that, feel free to, or, you know, points that you want to make about that, feel free to bring that up. But tonight, we're here really to, to bring forth some code amendments that we see as, minor changes that clean up some ambiguity that recently came before us from a commercial property owner, property manager, who felt like maybe we were interpreting this code incorrectly. And so because of that, we're wanting to address that. We think that the, one of the reasons why we're asking you for the second ordinance is because we feel like the city does have some liability with this ambiguity, and we'd like to get it resolved early. And the other thing I wanted to note, at the bottom of the staff report, there's a single state sentence that says, "None of these language changes result in a change from the city's current understanding and implementation policy." So none of these changes are going to necessarily result in a change in any of our PMU bills. So this is just, this cleans up some things. We took the opportunity to take care of one particular problem, which is the, which is the definition of parcel. And we can talk through those individually. One thing I'm not sure, in your, on yours, you've got the redline version on yours.
Yes.
Okay, so the audience won't have that information in front of them, but really, the first change is to replace the term parcel with the term property. The definition of parcel creates ambiguity on the parcels where multiple businesses exist in the same parcel. So monthly service charges for pavement maintenance utility for non-residential uses is a policy have been assigned via utility accounts. In instances where multiple businesses exist on the same piece of property, the city would bill each accountant and define the PMU of average daily trip estimated based on the most applicable use for the, for the customer. So that's the.
So where, which page are you on?
I, I just read that from the report itself.
Oh.
We'll move into the specifics.
Oh, okay.
The other, so these are generally the three changes that we're making. The other one is, the ordinance refers to the seventh edition of the ITE manual, or the Institute of Transportation Engineering Manual. We're, it's now in the ninth edition. There's really not much change in terms of traffic numbers for the categories that we use, but it's, we wanted to bring it up to date since we were making the change. And then the last one is to make sure it was clear that when, that, to establish that when a property includes multiple businesses, the rate will establish based on the charge, on charging each business type their appropriate bin. So that's how we're doing it now. And we're, we're not intending to drill down into the minutia of that, but we want, we want to be clear about that. If there's a, a business that's got, you know, high use on the one end of the property and a low use on the other end of the property, we want to make sure we're fair about that. And we want to make sure we're representing that reasonably with regard to the amount of trips that they're actually generating. And that's why we think that, that clarification helps. So with that, Ed, do you want to go through the individual changes, or do you want me to walk through?
No, I think, I think what you've seen is a number of changes which substitute the word property for parcel.
Yeah.
And that's the principal reason for coming before you. The other two are just cleanup changes using one newer edition of the ITE Traffic Manual and the like. So these are not huge changes. Glad to talk to you about any part of them. You might want to hear testimony, and then if you have questions, we're standing by.
You know, they're, they're so short that even the audience can't see them. If, if the request is there to actually read them in, the parcels change the properties and the other ones are very short, so.
Right.
We would be able to read it here, make changes if you were interested in hearing them.
May I ask a question before we do that? Just, I know I've asked this before. Can you define bin?
So in the ordinance, there's definition for bins, but what it's really done, if you look at the manual, there's, there's lots of land uses, and there's lots of variations in what each land use has for a trip designation, or how many peak hour trips, daily trips go to that, you know, are expected to be, come from that particular type of, of land use. The bins, for one, they, they bring that rate down. So there's some, there's some high-end trip generators that exceed, our, our highest bin levels that to 100 daily trips, average daily trips. But there's several businesses in the ITE manual that exceed that. So that's one thing. The other thing is it, it essentially gives, there's, there's five bins that we select from, and there's, since there's ranges of trips, it just kind of defines what those ranges are, and it plugs, you know, each, it takes all these variations in average daily trips and puts them into the five, which have ranges.
So what I'm hearing from you is, is these could be called tier five, bin five?
Categories. Categories.
Categories.
Yes. Let me think. I guess we have received some letters and emails that Katie has, and we just want to add those to the record as well, so.
They're there.
Got them?
Yeah, we have them.
Okay. And again, with that, I think the city is most interested, as was the original intent, to allocate the cost of the fee in accordance with the amount of trip generation that would, that would happen. And the ordinance has a lot of provisions for various kinds of trips, what we call pass-by-trip factors, and does that in a way that, that the original intent was to be fair with regard to how trips were assigned to a particular business type. And so we're, that's where I think this change is going to be helpful in eliminating that ambiguity, if there was any. We've never heard of it until recently.
Any, any other comments from the commission? Hearing none. I do have, I do have on a separate listing here Graham Peterson listed as a, per citizen comment. Do you want to speak? You haven't, you haven't, you haven't filed the card?
Do you want me to elaborate?
Yeah, sure.
There's not that list of other people.
It's in, it's actually in our agenda.
Graham Peterson, Oregon City. Yeah, so my, I think my number-one concern is, in situations where you have a big commercial property, and a customer might enter that property, and they are now off a public street, and I think what I'm concerned with is that there, not every customer that visits a, say there's a Carl's Jr. or a bank that's an out parcel within that property. If that customer visits that bank, and then also visits a grocery store and a gas station within that parcel, they've only, that's one unique trip on the public right-of-way. So that's really where my concern is, is that those kind of properties get some, get their consideration. And I'm not familiar almost at all with the International Transportation Engineer Manual. So I don't know how those are categorized different than shopping centers. And, but there, that, that sort of trip does exist. And so it's important to distinguish, in other words, a shopping, a shopping center that shares some out parcels should not pay the same rate as if there is, so the sum of all those parcels should not be the sum of a number of individual businesses, because they're, if there's a, a out parcel, a bank, if I drive down Malala, I pull into a bank, then I get back onto Malala, then I drive down to Fred Myers, go to Fred Myers, that's different than me pulling into a unique shopping center and visiting three businesses. Does that make sense?
We understand the question.
Trying to explain.
We had the discussion. We had the discussion, I'm going to turn that quiet.
Yeah, we've had that discussion.
Do you want to speak to it at this point?
You want us to wait or is there other testimony?
We do, we do have other speakers. So we'll, we'll address that question later. Is there anybody here representing Craig Danielson? Want to come forward? Name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. My name is Jill Long. I'm an attorney with Lane Powell. And I'm here tonight representing the Danielson family, Craig Danielson and Carol Suzuki, who are the owners of Hilltop Mall Shopping Center. I have a letter I've prepared and I'd like to give it to you after I just run through the substance of it with you tonight. As I'm sure you're aware, the Danielsons are a longtime outstanding corporate citizen here in Oregon City. They participated in a lot of countless forums and community engagement activities, including the task force that was originally formed in 2007 for the creation of the, of the pavement maintenance utility fee, which I'll call PMF because that's easier. Our clients have some very serious concerns about the amendments before you tonight. And I'd like to just go over three main ones today, try and get that lower so I can see you all. First of all, I think the rushed adoption of these amendments tonight does a disservice to the personal services contract that this commission approved in August with Murray Smith and Associates to take a look, for a third, a third-party look at the pavement, pavement maintenance utility fee. The scope of work for that project and the project schedule shows stakeholder presentations of the project work happening late 2014, early 2015. So that work is still in process. That work should really inform and direct the kind of amendments that might be needed for the PMF. And by doing this tonight, it's premature. It's not getting the benefit of that contract, the city funds that were used to enter into that contract, which I believe are around $63,000. Secondly, the changes tonight are significant. Despite the one-page staff report that says they're just clarifying, they do have significant meaning and they're somewhat confusing. The change to the language really has a sweeping effect on the ordinance. It would be unfortunate to dismiss the hard work that was done in 2007 when the precise language of the ordinance was put into effect. The definition of parcel is there for a reason. It was put into the ordinance for a reason and to dismiss it without any rationale or basis does a disservice to that original work done and to the way that the ordinance should be operating. Additionally, the proposed amendments are a little confusing. The staff report fails to provide any clarity about how the changes will affect users. I recognize that the staff report says it won't affect users, but we have some concerns that that might not be the case. Specifically, the staff report says that they'll use utility accounts for properties that have multiple users. That leaves open the question of what happens when a utility account has multiple users. At Hilltop Mall, there are utility accounts that have multiple users. We're uncertain what would happen in that situation. Furthermore, there isn't any evidence to justify billing by utility account and we'd like to see some rationale and some reasoning for that, a thoughtful analysis of why that's the appropriate way to bill. It appears to be a somewhat subject determination by staff and it's not clearly supported in the staff report. And we'd just like to see more thoughtful work taken to make appropriate changes to the PMF ordinance. And finally, our clients have a concern with the lack of process and transparency related to these changes in the amendment. The proposed changes today create changes to the ordinance without any stakeholder input, without the benefit of the Murray Smith and Associates work that's currently being done. And it's being done without any significant rationale or explanation in the staff report and all those things are concerning. So what we'd like to request from the commission tonight is to continue this agenda item. We also ask that the commission direct staff to work with Murray Smith and Associates on the amendment and prepare a more thorough and clear staff report that takes into consideration the work that's being done by them right now. And then also, we ask that the public, in particular the business community, has an opportunity to workshop or have a similar type of meeting with staff to ask questions and to talk through the rationale and the logic behind these changes. A thorough and thoughtful public process does not need to take months and we recognize that, but this language has only been available to the public for two days and we haven't had a lot of time to digest it or look back at what was done in 2007 and how this differs. So we ask for more time for that. As you know, the Danielson family has a long history in Oregon City and they do not object to paying their fair share of fees. They just would like to participate in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have then William Gifford and Amber Holbeck if you would come forward. At the same time.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I usually consider myself fairly well up to date on what's going on in the city, but this really surprised me that I hadn't, that I hadn't heard anything at all about this until just today. I think that the PMF, and as I recall, it was originally called transportation utility.
Make it.
Yeah, yeah. I think I suggested the change of the name to PMF because that's what it was supposed to be used for. I, I think that it is possibly one of the most successful programs this city has ever adopted. I wish the county would have the, the chutzpah to, to be able to do that with their county roads, but they say, oh no, well, we have to have all the citizens vote on it. While all the citizens didn't vote on this fee, I have heard from no citizens complaining about it. I think the way it was developed was exemplary. I think the citizen participation was astonishing. I think that the opportunity for involvement was, was so transparent, it was, to reuse the word exemplary, it was, it was transparent. It was, it was very thoughtful. It was extended over a period of time, as I recall, you know, months, months of efforts to develop this matrix, to develop the, the whole concept of this, of this PMF. And I have never heard anyone speak against the program because they see that it works. I think we've got a really remarkably effective way of funding our street maintenance. This particular change, I don't really have any issues with it. I'm just surprised how fast it's happening. And I don't understand the rationale behind why it's happening in a, in a one-two punch tonight. And I would just suggest that you, and I don't know why, and I haven't talked to any of you about it, to find out why. You couldn't just put this off a little bit, give the public more time to consider it, to work with city, work with staff to find out, you know, is this, is this really, is this necessary? Is it really important? I think that the, the, update the addition used for the Institute of Transportation Engineers with the seventh edition to the ninth edition. Come on, why don't you just say the most current edition?
You can't.
You can't?
No.
You can't say it's the most current edition?
You can't. You have to have something specific.
The law says you can't.
The law says you have to say a, a specific number. Goodness sakes. Well, those are the types of things, those are questions, I think, that the community would ask if they would have had more time to ask the questions. But we really haven't had time to question, ask the questions. And I would just encourage you to hold off a little bit more, give the community a little more opportunity to, to weigh in on the issues. Those are my comments.
And Mayor Neely and Commission, once again, I'm Amber Holbeck. I represent the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but while William, William and I will perhaps-
Different?
-present things differently, we're going to sound pretty similar. What I was going to share is our pavement maintenance utility fee has gone a long way to make a difference in the ability of many streets to really be, or become a useful corridor for commerce, improve the quality of life, and improve the image to both visitors and perhaps investors. And so that has been certainly a success. I do share this message with the support of the Oregon City Chamber Executive Committee, though. We do recommend that, that you break up the first and the second readings for this particular item. It really does more to build trust with the business community and the public in general. And it just feels like it's a more open process with those who are stakeholders in this, in this effort. And that's all I had to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
So cute.
Is that what it means?
That doesn't make her cute. I don't understand her kind at all. We're going to go to both the, probably the attorney and staff or some-
Yeah.
...from discussion as, as soon as they figure out what they're going to say.
Mayor, while, while we're waiting for them, I can at least set the context because I thought Mr. Gifford in particular brought up a, a good point. Much of the discussion the commission has been having is a result of a lawsuit filed by Craig Danielson alleging that the ordinance is ambiguous. And so the clarifications that you see in the, before the commission, they've been talking about this in executive session with their attorneys because when a lawsuit is filed, it's, it's, because the city could potentially have liability, generally this, the city commissioners confer with their legal counsel in closed session. So that's not, closed session means closed. It doesn't mean open to the public. So that background wasn't there. And I hope that Ed will provide actually a little bit more explanation of that. But that, that is the reason that you haven't seen more of these actual word changes. And they're mostly word changes in the document previously.
So a couple of other things that I'll address. The pass-by trip factor, which is really one of the first things that came up in the testimony was just this concern for if you're, if you're at a, you know, one particular business and then you go to another business on the same property, how does the city figure that in? And in fact, in, you know, all cases, not, not any one particular property in mind, but in all cases, the ITE manual tells us what those pass-by trip factors are. And so normally, for instance, a shopping center, and the example I use is Clackamas Town Center. So if you're at the Clackamas Town Center and you want to go to the bookstore, for instance, and you want to go to a clothing store, you know, all the various uses there, you go to the parking lot and you visit all those various businesses.
Then you park and then you go in the mall.
And, and many of the businesses, and, and we don't have that kind of a shopping center in Oregon City. We have shopping centers, you use a little differently. But even in those shopping center cases, there are reductions for pass-by trip factors. So for instance, a bank, a drive-in bank might have a average daily trip per unit of 66.5 trips. The pass-by trip factor reduces that by 25, it reduces it by a factor of .27. So it reduces it 75% from that number. And that's how, I mean, all of this was figured into your ordinance and those are rates that we apply to all properties in Oregon City. And so I just want to be clear about that, that, that pass-by trip factor is something that's considered. It's in your ordinance. It's applied. We use that. We think it's fair. And so that's, that's that particular item. The other one is the, the scope of work with Murray Smith and Associates that you approved. It, that is, if you remember, we have a five-year pavement maintenance plan. It talks about things like which roads, what the condition of the roads are, where our priorities should be, how do we coordinate utility work with that pavement maintenance, you know, looks back at what we've done already. It looks back at those roads that maybe look really bad and, but they're probably not the right roads to invest in because they've kind of moved beyond their, their, their life, but they've still got some wear and tear left in them. So it's, it's, it really had nothing to do with the ordinance. So the scope of work that we have with Murray Smith and Associates isn't to evaluate the ordinance or the language in it, or evaluate necessarily our process for how we're charging that. Because we haven't seen our, our process be, until now, we haven't heard that it's, it's broken. And we hadn't really seen this parcel argument until this lawsuit came about, or actually before that. We've been working with Craig, that's the other point I'd like to make, is we've been working with Danielson Property for, for a fair amount of time. And we've put a lot of hours into kind of working with them. We'd like to, at one point in time, we, we suggested, well, we suggested that traffic studies, you know, the, the ordinance has provisions for, what is it, Ed, the, if you want to dispute-
An appeal.
An appeal process. So, you know, Craig brought us really a, one, one property that he wanted to appeal and we've looked at that. We actually made adjustments based on some, not necessarily a detailed engineering study, but an engineering study that looked at, you know, sales at that particular business and tried to make that adjustment. We've also offered to do traffic counts of that particular parcel, on the, on the whole parcel and that hasn't been, that was rejected. So, so I just want to make it clear, the MS, the scope of work that you approved for the Murray Smith work is more about how do we, how do we spend the money in the next five years? It's not necessarily about collection of the funds or the ordinance.
Just a, a few things. I think Mr. Peterson's comments on this mixed use of a particular property has been answered by the engineer. Let me look at a couple of things that Ms. Long raised. There were three concerns. The rush process is really an issue for the commission in its discretion. There's no legal requirement that you take longer or shorter than the item that you have before you. That's a, a judgment call. I would observe, though, that we're looking at an appeal of either one or two months' worth of assessments and maybe looking at $300, $500. When you weigh that against, and I think it's a noble thing to pay your lawyer, when you weigh that against the cost, this is a, a way of resolving that ambiguity and doing it decisively and doing it without having to go for months in, in a court. So that's the, the judgment that the manager made. We've drafted the amendments. I think we'd still be in good shape if we had to go to court. But the, the question that the manager raised is what's the best allocation of the city's dollars? And again, do you pay lawyers or do you try to fix the problem that gave rise to all this? And we found two other items that were handy to be raised. The ITE manual changed from one edition to another and also specifically allowing the blended rate. These changes are not sweeping. They are changing basically one word, parcel to property. They are specifically allowing for the process that has occurred in this city and its administration of its own ordinance since 2007. Okay? And the, there's a, a use of, there's, there's no real confusion here. We use the utility accounts, if I understand John correctly, as the means of billing. All right? But we identify uses.
Yeah.
And we do provide for an appeal. And as Mr. Lewis has already told you, there have been two uses of that appeal already. And there may be more. So this is a process that can work. And the, the use of the bin, I would use category, but you know, that's the, the terminology that's used, is appropriate. And there has to be a judgment call made. And that judgment call deals with the use and deals in what category you should use for that use, given the ITE manual, which ascribes traffic generation to each of those uses. And also, we've provided for an appeals process for someone who feels wronged. And we deal with it. So from a legal standpoint, I don't see anything problematic here. It's your call on whether you want to go ahead. It's your call about whether or not you want these changes. But they are defensible.
Another point, another point I'd make would be that where there is question about how these vehicle trips are tied together, we're willing to do traffic counts to actually assess whether in fact the counts coming into what I'd call a mixed-use area of multiple properties in fact are lower than we, than we take through the, through the process. So we have, we actually have remedies to look at that.
Yeah. And, right. So the numbers that we're using are actually less than the land use approval that was done at that, this particular property that's concerning. And I don't want to be overly focused on that particular piece of property.
Yeah, I'd like to broaden it out.
We've been, we've been work, you know, we would work with other property owners when they have questions. We're transparent about showing them what those rates are and how we get to the calculation. And so, you know, I think this property owner and, and others beyond, we would, you know, we've, we've already shared a fair amount of information about how that, how their trips are generated or how their trips are charged. And so I think there has been a fair amount of involvement in this particular case.
And they can always appeal if they don't agree.
They can appeal. That's what's happened here.
Right, right.
Now, is there's a question, Mr. Gifford? Or a comment? Or a comment? Okay.
Briefly, three points. One, one is, my comments were not necessarily about the substance of, of the changes, but more about the process. And if the, if the commission chooses to use the advice of the attorney that, that this is a cost savings means, then that's certainly a judgment call on, on, on all of your part, I have no issue with, you know, you have to make those decisions, although there's a little flaw in, in, in the, in the logic that it's only one word change, come on. One word, yeah, one word can be, you know, the difference between would and should, you know, and, yeah, one word is, is, can be very significant. Lastly, is I want to make sure that I, and I want to build on, on John's comment about the fact that this is the property, I mean, we only have this one particular property with that particular concerns, however, when we develop the, the Blue Heron and when we do something on the landfill, I just want to make sure that our, our PMAF is in line and that we have the word, the verbiage in place to be able to address other properties that, that are bound to come.
This does apply to other properties in the city currently.
I just want to make sure that we are remembering that there's more than one property.
But, but there are existing more properties that are similar to that, same, same issue.
Hopefully a couple more.
And in fact, in fact, one of the guiding principles for me is it's consistent with what we've been doing. And it's consistent with what we've been doing for other properties of similar uses.
I'm just thinking about the future.
And it would be consistent with what we do in the future.
That's what I want to hear, thank you.
And I think any further future development will probably be aware of what, what our ordinance is.
Bet they will.
Well, go ahead, I, I'm, I'm pretty open to comments, but this will be the last one.
Thank you again, I just wanted to address a couple of things about the litigation, I didn't want to address that originally because I didn't know if that would be part of the conversation. As far as saving funds in terms of attorney fees, and I agree with Mr. Sullivan that paying your attorneys is a, is a noble pursuit, obviously for the Danielsons, this isn't about the amount that they're paying in the PMAF, it's more of an issue on a more philosophical basis and how the ordinance was meant to be applied when it was drafted in 2007 and how it's being applied and it relates to that parcel definition. The litigation is a snapshot in time, at the time that the litigation was filed, and we'll look at the original amendment, or excuse me, the original ordinance. So this amendment, although it may make changes in the future, won't impact that litigation and so I would ask you to consider that. And then on the internal trips versus pass-bys that Mr. Peterson spoke about, I know we're not going to get into a really deep transportation engineering analysis and I-
Thank you.
-I'm not qualified for that anyhow.
Yeah, we don't want to be earl.
But I do want to point out that there is a difference between pass-by trips that happen in our daily lives when we're going from one place to the other, maybe we're getting coffee on the way to work, maybe we're getting groceries on the way home, and we recognize that those are included. But different classifications under the ITE pick up something different when it relates to shopping centers. Shopping centers, especially a shopping center like Hilltop Mall, has internal private streets, not all do, but this particular piece of property does. They're paid for by the landowner, they're maintained by the landowner and the tenants there, and they're a separate sort of cost and frankly, sort of a separate asset to the city that, that city users, maybe who are or are not using the shopping center use. But those internal trips are different than pass-by trips, that's when you go to a single location and like what Mr. Lewis was saying, might hit a variety of, of shops, you might go to the grocery store, you might see a movie, you might go out to dinner. And so I just want to make that distinction because we feel like that's an important distinction between pass-by trips and the shopping center classification that picks up internal trips. Thank you.
That was, actually, that was what my specific comment was directed to. We can do traffic counts at the, at the, at the properties to find out what those traffic counts are.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We, that is a conversation that we've had, it's, we have a traffic engineer that we've worked with for a long time at this site and they estimate to do a really accurate count of internal trips at a shopping center is a fairly expensive study, around $20,000. I recognize that the offer that's been made by the city to participate in traffic counts is significantly less, I believe it was $1,000. And so we have just some concerns about the accuracy and the ability to really measure that. It's a large amount on an appeal to take on in terms of trying to get those accurate counts and that's why the ITE is a wonderful tool because all that data is out there and we draw from that. But thank you for raising-
So we'll go ahead to Commissioner discussions now, Commissioner Roth.
I have a couple of questions, has this language really only been available for two days? The specific language?
No, I, I know it's been in front of me for a little while, but I-
No, it was, the agenda was posted last Friday.
Yeah. And so this, these specific changes were in that agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, that's something I'm confused about.
Commissioner Roth, we, I believe our legal counsel also sent their legal counsel copies of that, those proposed changes.
She's saying no, and I don't know, I wasn't the one who did it.
They were just invited to comment, I think it was.
Okay. And then on the changing from the word parcel to property, there seems to be quite a difference in opinion at what the outcome would allow, be allowed by this change. And I'm concerned about that, I, I don't think that that's something that we need to take lightly. So, you know, I, I appreciate the implementing consistency that, that John and his group has gone through to do this and also the attorney Sullivan's mentioned a monetary thrift. But to me, transparency is our primary concern here, it rises far to the top above everything else. And I wouldn't, would not like to err on the side of being accused of not being transparent in anything we do.
Yeah, the comment I had really follows Commissioner Roth's comment. There must have been a definitional issue between parcel and property and if you can expand on that, I'd appreciate it.
The issue is that whether parcel glides over into tax lot or whether or not you look at the property as a whole. And the way it's been administered, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we look at the shopping center uses that are concentrated in one clump, if you will, and those outlying is not part of the shopping center. I think the argument, if I understand it correctly, is that parcel should have all of those things in one bill and one assessment. And that's not the way the city has been administering the ordinance. It looks at the, for want of a better word, the shopping center uses that are in that group as one set of uses with one assessment and then the outline, and again, I'll get it wrong, the bank and the-
Right, McDonald's and those other-
As a separate one. Their desire, if I understand them correctly, is that they'd like to see this in one assessment, which would likely be lower. And that's, that's the issue.
Right, so we typically, out of just our methodology for billing, we've got utility accounts, so wherever there's a water meter, there's a utility account associated with that. And we have, I think, 11 water meters on this particular site. And so we look at each of those accounts and most of them serve individual buildings, some of them don't, some of, but so like McDonald's, for instance, they have, we've got a PMAF factor for them and a pass-by trip factor for them and we calculate their, their rate. That's true for most of the outlying buildings, Key Bank, the movie theater, the restaurants on that site. There are, there is quite a bit of that property as well that has various different kind of uses along there, so around the Safeway shopping, or around the Safeway store, there's several different individual kinds of uses. We classify all that as shopping center. So I don't know the percentage exactly, but about 50% of the, the site businesses are classified as shopping center, which is a low, you know, it's in bin too, so it's got lower rates. But overall, there's the other one where everybody knows where Papa Murphy's is, right? So that, that group of businesses also is classified as shopping center in our, in our methodology and our, our assessment. But yeah, it's, it's associated with a water account or an account, a utility bill account.
So over the whole history of our putting forward PMAF, which has been-
Six years.
Six years. And that, over that whole history, we've been building that particular fashion.
Yes. And, and so we're not really, I mean, there's some adjustments, but not, you know, not wholesale changes, we're just, like we said, we reduced the number for the theater based on a, a traffic study that they, that they produced and we agreed with, so.
I'm not aware of any other appeals, John, were there others before?
Well, there may have been appeals back in 2008 that were, I don't remember the details of that, but I, if they were, they were dealt with by staff and-
Trust me, I know.
So, so to be clear, the proposed changes would not change anybody's current fee? Okay.
No, we, we want to align it with our, our current understanding, current practice, you know, so that's, that's really where we see, and, you know, until, until that difference was pointed out, we, you know, parcel to us meant, you know, individual account. And for the most part, that's where, you know, except for these large parcels where maybe there's a, the other Oregon City shopping centers, you know, they're similar in this where they would have larger property with several different types of businesses on them.
Well, there are probably several options available to us, we have a first reading and second reading put forward. Oh, you're, excuse me, let me get on the floor here, Commissioner Mo.
Thank you, thank you. So I just want everybody to know, 2007, I was on the TAC committee. I went to all of the meetings concerning the maintenance fee. I sat in, I can't tell you how many hours was spent to discuss this. The Home Builders Association was brought in, the business community came together, it was discussed, everybody felt good about it. Since it's been implemented, I've heard from one senior citizen who said, "I like it, but I don't want to pay anymore." And I get that, I totally do. As far as Craig Danielson, Craig has been a good partner to us in the city, but we have also been a good partner to Craig in our city. So I think it's been a mutual relationship and friendship that we've had with him. So I want to be sure that it is, in my opinion, parcel and property, in my opinion, is the same. If you put 10 attorneys in the room together, you're going to get 10 different answers as to what a parcel and property means. So, I mean, I am fine with passing this for the first reading and taking comments at our next meeting for the second reading and adjusting if we need to. But this has been fair and, and equal all the way through and it has been consistent. We're, our citizens have benefited from this and I'm just sorry that it took seven years for Craig to bring this to our attention. So that's my only comment.
I was just going to follow up with a, just a simple comment, I, I did hear complaints when the, when the, when citizens started seeing their bills, however, most of those complaints were directed at the increase and many of those people told me subsequently they, they saw the benefit of it and they were actually happy, happy for that, so.
And I will have one comment to John because we differ on this. This pavement maintenance fee was directed for roads only, did not include bike or pad. So I know that you feel differently about it, but that is one my, one of my comments. We will agree to disagree.
I'll leave that alone. Thanks, Ed.
But I was there for those meetings and it was specifically sad for roads, for cars.
I think I might add on to that, I'm not saying that her opinion is wrong, we had various segments of roads that needed improvement, where there was in fact no sidewalks or ditches and so forth and that, that's a real danger situation where there's no place for a pedestrian to go except jump in a ditch to avoid a vehicle.
Well-
So under those conditions, I, I think getting some, either coverts there to deal with the stormwater and covering you up with something so that there is actually an escape route for pedestrians in the city is, is, is a important consideration.
And I have to tell you, in '07, that came up and it was suggested that maybe that staff should maybe look at putting together a sidewalk fund that would be on the utility bill. Does anybody want to address that?
Another utility fee. Commissioner Polly.
Um, yes, I, I do, you know, I believe that process is very important. So, and I think that communication with the citizens is important and a general understanding of everything and, and I think we've learned a lot with our discussion tonight, so I am not comfortable with doing a first and second reading because I think that we should follow the process.
With that, do I hear a motion?
I will move for first reading on 14-1018. I'll, I'll second that.
This is ordinance number 14-1018, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City adopting changes to the transportation utility fee of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 13.30.
Vote please. For votes for, one abstention because of the attention.
Doug, you abstained.
You haven't, you haven't yet to vote.
This is saying first and second reading up here at the top.
That's okay, the motion was for-
For first only.
First reading.
Did you vote?
Did you want to vote, Doug?
There's an abstention.
Oh, okay.
That's a vote, now we don't have to bother with second reading.
Okay.
We don't have to put any motion forward.
Oh, got it.
I just want to speed the process up.
What?
Well, you can't do a second reading unless it's unanimous, so he's-
Oh, I see.
Well, I only put one reading.
I know that.
I know.
Now your full, only discussion is why we did what we did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Purpose was not to go on it at all.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so there will be a second reading later.
With that, we're going to the authorizing sale of general obligation bonds for library expansion. And it's not Marine Cole, but it's Wyatt Parno that's going to speak forward to the library this time.
Yes, thank you Mayor Neely and members of the commission, so Resolution 14-31 would authorize staff to proceed with the issuance of bonds for the library expansion project. And as you know, in May, the residents voted to authorize up to $6 million in bonds for the library project. And you, the commission, referred to them, general obligation bonds for the purpose of getting the lowest financing opportunity that we could and also made it a point that we wouldn't increase property taxes, that we would use existing resources to do that. The city will look at, assuming that you proceed with the resolution, the city will look at a couple of options. One is to issue a request for proposals for banks for a private placement for the loan. And banks offer very favorable rates because of the tax-exempt status of the bonds. And however, lately, banks haven't been, because of the economy, extending longer terms for debt, but we're still going to try because in the past, it's been a really useful tool to save thousands of dollars of underwriters' costs. So we'll look at that option and we'll also look at bonding, which is going out for a negotiated public sale, so we issue bonds on the, on the public market. And the good news is that we're in a, in a favorable rate environment either way, but we'll choose the best option for the library. And I want to let you know the city's been working with Carol Samuels, who you know, who's with Piper Jaffray, and who will probably serve as the placement agent or the underwriter. And we've also worked with Hawkins, Delafield and Wood as the bond counsel. And Hawkins drafted the resolution that you're looking at tonight to make sure that we meet all the legal requirements for the tax-exempt status that gets us a low rate. So with that, I would ask that you please approve Resolution 14-31 and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So you have questions?
Move to approve Resolution Number 14-31.
Seconded by Commissioner Mo. The vote is unanimous.
Woohoo!
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going on to Resolution 1433, supporting the reopening of the Wellam and Follos locks. This is a resolution that I put forward and I'm looking for it. I'll get it in a moment. Well, it's going to come up here, right? And I'll go ahead and read it. This is a resolution to amend the right-of-way usage fees of-
Wrong one.
That's the wrong one, never mind.
About that.
That was the wrong one. Sorry about that. What I'm, where is the word I'm looking for here?
It's the.
Seven C.
Oh, my apologies, and she was trying to correct me, and I just ignored her. Sorry, Commissioner. No, all reason.
I get that.
A resolution, a resolution supporting the reopening of Willamette Falls locks. Whereas, on January first, eighteen seventy-three, the Willamette Falls locks opened to allow passage around the waterfall in Oregon City, thereby providing access to a one-river system, and whereas, in nineteen fifteen, the Army Corps of Engineers purchased the locks from the private operator, thereby ensuring free public passage to the locks, and whereas, in nineteen seventy-four, the Willamette Falls locks were listed on the National Register of Historic Places, it was the first significant facility built to improve navigation on the Columbia Snake River inland water system, and through nineteen thirty-nine, the most important, and whereas, whereas, in nineteen ninety-one, the Willamette Falls locks was designated as a state historic civil engineering landmark by the American Society of Civil Engineers, and whereas, in two thousand six, I just lost the resolution, in two thousand six, I'll bring it back up again, and whereas, in two thousand six through two thousand ten.
No, no, no.
No, no.
Up, up, up.
Whereas, on October twenty-third, two thousand eight.
Up again.
Sorry about that. Is that the last one? And whereas, in two thousand six, Governor Kowalowski designated the Willamette Falls locks as an Oregon Solutions Project, and formed the Willamette Falls Locks Oregon Solutions Task Force, which continues today as one Willamette River Coalition hosted by the Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation to preserve.
Do I look at that?
Yes, I would. To preserve, we'll come to it here. Where would, where did I hit off? That's all right. I was still on to Governor Kowalowski?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll start it over again. Whereas, in two thousand six, Governor Kowalowski designated the Willamette Falls locks as an Oregon Solutions Project, and formed the Willamette Falls Locks Oregon Solutions Task Force, which continues today as the one Willamette River Coalition hosted by the Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation to preserve the locks and support its continuous operation, and whereas, on October twenty-third, two thousand eight, the Center for Economic Development and Education Research released a report under contract with the Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation titled "The Willamette Falls Locks: A Case Study Analysis of Potential Transfer Issues," and whereas, from two thousand six through two thousand ten, funding provided to the Corps of Engineers from Mulledat, Quackamas County, and the US Congress allowed for seasonal operations and selected structural upgrades, including two-point-two million dollars in ARRA funds, and whereas, in two thousand eleven, Willamette Falls locks was placed into non-operational status, and on short notice, were closed to vessel passage based on an engineering assessment that identified safety concerns of potential failure, and whereas, the closure was placed, has placed a severe hardship on commercial, recreational, and tribal river users, and whereas, in October two thousand twelve, the National Trust for Historic Preservation declared Willamette Falls as one of the most threatened national treasures, thereby providing added technical assistance, and whereas, in two thousand twelve, the Historic Preservation League of Oregon, now Restore Oregon, named the Willamette Falls locks as one of its ten most endangered places, and whereas, the locks are primarily historic asset under applications being prepared for designation of the area that follows as state and national heritage areas, and whereas, on September twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, the Corps of Engineers gave notice of their intent to initiate a public consultation process under Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act to determine whether the closure action had an inverse effect on the historic integrity of the locks based on the defining qualities and features that made the locks eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and whereas, on May fifteenth, two thousand twelve, the Corps of Engineers released their finding of historic adverse effect under Section one oh six of the Historic Preservation Act, announced their intent to proceed with development of agreement to establish how to best avoid, minimize, or mitigate the identified adverse effect to the historic character of the locks, and whereas, in October, in August two thousand fourteen, Eco-Northwest, under contract to the Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation, published the Willamette Falls Economic Potential Report, providing information on potential operating cost and community benefits, whereas, the City of Oregon City regards Willamette Falls as an important part of its history and the history of the development of commerce between the upper and lower Willamette Valley, and still can play an important role in that commerce, whereas, the City of Oregon City views Willamette Falls as an important feature to attract tourism and recreation in conjunction with our Willamette Falls Project. Now, therefore, Oregon City resolves that, Oregon City urges the Corps of Engineers to reopen the Willamette Falls locks to general public, commercial, recreational, and cultural marine traffic, two, that the Oregon City thanks the Corps of Engineers for working with local stakeholders to assess and mitigate the adverse effects of the closure, and urges the Corps of Engineers to expedite the needed repairs and craft a plan for sustainable operation of the locks, three, that Oregon City supports the recognition of the Willamette Falls locks in the regional transportation plan, inclusion of the Willamette Falls locks as a J-PAC federal priority, four, the Oregon City supports creation of a state task force to work with the Corps of Engineers to develop a plan for sustainable operations of the Willamette Falls locks, five, where, that Oregon City urges the Oregon Congressional, excuse me, that Oregon City urges the Oregon Congressional delegation to support the expedited repair and reopening of the Willamette locks, and we then approved and adopted at the regular meeting of the City Commission held on the nineteenth day of November two thousand fourteen. One of the reasons this is a long resolution is the Corps of Engineers made a decision without going through an appropriate process, and this is a documentation of what that overall process was. Corps of Engineers was operating on its own, not recognizing that it had certain obligations under law in terms of how that facility would be used, and so this basically documents that history, the whole overall history of the locks. And I, Sandy Carter, I think she's left, I know she was here.
She left.
Yeah, but Lisa Nato and Darlene Hooly were not able to be here at this meeting, they are, they are working with the Congress and lobbying, and lobbying efforts to get funding for the locks. They, they are also, were not also able to make our next meeting, and we do not want to hold up this resolution any further. So, with that, I don't think this requires a vote, it's a resolution, or does it?
Yes.
It is, so, do I have, before I sign this, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So, I move to approve Resolution fourteen, what is it, Resolution number fourteen dash thirty-three, supporting the reopening of the Willamette Falls locks.
My second.
Unanimous, very, very good. Okay. That will go on to our next item, Resolution fourteen thirty-three supporting, oh, that's, that's the last one, Resolution fourteen thirty, and many of the right-of-way usage rates were certain public utilities operating within the City of Oregon City right-of-way. We brought this up at the last commission meeting, and people appropriately came forward and say there really hasn't been enough opportunity for the public and businesses to address this particular issue. I'll turn it over to John Lewis, but I think he'll probably turn it over to somebody else maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty accurate. So, Lance Polison has got a short presentation to give you a video, I think, as well, and so he's going to go through this. Lance was up last meeting, and yes, we, similar to tonight, we suggested that maybe we push this another, for another meeting, provide a couple more weeks of notice, so that's what we're here to do, but the content of the decision hasn't changed.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
Oh, thanks for having me. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Katie, Katie is getting Ms. Nancy Werner on the phone to join us.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Welcome in, Nancy.
Hi Nancy, how's the weather back there?
A snowflake raffle. She doesn't want to talk about it.
Sorry, I could, I missed that one.
I said, "How's the weather back there?"
Oh, it's very cold, thank you.
So, to get started, I'm going to, we have a short video presentation about franchise fees and right-of-way. Following that, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, and we'll get, with that, we'll get started.
Every day, we make use of our streets and public rights of way, though most folks don't give it a lot of thought. But like the airwaves used by radio and TV, the streets and public rights of way in our cities belong not to any one person, but to all of us. Our publicly owned streets and rights of way are primarily managed and maintained on behalf of all users by Oregon local governments. Our streets and rights of way surround and connect us. Each of us uses this unique resource when we go to work, access goods or services, pick up our kids from school, or visit family and friends. We use utility networks in our rights of way to cook our food and heat our homes. Besides water, plumbing, and electricity, our streets also host critical pathways to phones, computers, televisions, and the global internet. Whether the connections are wired or wireless, commercial businesses depend on the people's property to deliver connections that allow us to stay in touch with each other and the world. We also depend on our streets and property to keep us safe, healthy, and free from harm. Of course, keeping streets in good repair isn't free. There's a cost for maintaining all of this, not to mention coordinating work of many different users to minimize the headaches for some. Not only does it cost money to keep the public right-of-way accessible and useful for everyone, but many of the users are private companies, for-profit companies who pay rent to we the people in various forms, primarily to Oregon local governments. The streets and rights of way are our collective property as taxpayers, right? Since the public is the ultimate landlord, cities manage the people's property on the public's behalf. After all, it wouldn't be very responsible to let private companies use our streets for free, would it?
Charging rent for use of public facilities by private people is nothing new here in Oregon. For years, we've been doing this, been managing it because of the Oregon Constitution of home rule, also under city charters and state law. We are charged with managing the public's right-of-way. Now, the voters expect us to make sure that they get a proper return for the use of their publicly owned right-of-ways, and that's what we do.
Fortunately, our partners in federal and state government have long understood the importance of ensuring rent is paid for public property, and many federal statutes reinforce this critical principle.
Federal funds were used to map out the Oregon Trail. In other words, management of our public right-of-ways started with our early pioneers to ensure transportation network benefited everyone, not just our commercial interests.
What was once a dirt track now includes essential services, water, sewer, gas, and communications.
Internet access is our newest essential service, connecting us to jobs, education, and health. Cities must ensure that this critical service is as available as other essential services are using public rights of way.
It takes a lot of planning to make sure that when work is done on one part of the street, it creates as little impact as possible on all the other uses and users, and care must be taken to assure all service needs are met equally and fairly. These services need maintenance, repairs, and additions, or more wires, pipes, and cables are being added to our right-of-way to meet the needs of ever-changing technology. Even wireless phones now increasingly need right-of-way antennas and facilities to connect to backhaul landlines. All of this has to be handled and coordinated with as little disruption to traffic and businesses as possible. Municipalities must also respond to safety issues. In any construction project, access for emergency vehicles needs to be planned.
These additions and repairs to the right-of-way are happening all the time. The number of requests for construction permits has increased dramatically, and yet the fee structure has not changed hardly at all.
Great communities are very different from each other, that's why a construction schedule for a hail.
Might not work in Beaverton at all.
Wait, did we mention that none of this is free? If each company had to spend the time and money to find space to lay their pipes, wires, and cables, the cost of providing their services would increase considerably. This compensation may take different forms depending on the community, but all of it is returned to the ultimate owner, the public, in the form of critical municipal services such as police, fire, parks, and street repairs.
Every so often, the proposals to cut back Oregon right-of-way fees or change the law to make one size fit all in distinctly different Oregon communities.
What works in Portland may not work well here in Cottage Grove. We have to keep the faith of the citizens and taxpayers and make sure that both the right-of-ways are protected for all users and that the public is fairly compensated.
After all, the streets and rights of way in Oregon belong to everyone.
That was cute, do you have it on YouTube?
Well, I actually, you know, if, if, if they would have put me on, I'd have been happy to wear a suit.
Yeah.
I'm just very upset about this.
Yeah.
Is this a League of Oregon City presentation?
Uh, no, it's actually funded by the City of Eugene, endorsed by the League of Cities.
Well, they should have asked our mayor.
Yes.
They just have no.
I'm just, I'm not going to attend one of their mayor's meetings here the year afterwards.
There you go.
Or the year afterwards, the year afterwards.
You will not be attending mayor's meetings.
No, I won't.
Well, in that video, you may have seen the logo for Northwest Natural Gas or PGE, and that's really what, what I'm here to discuss. So, in talking about where we're at now, I want to go back just a little bit and talk about before the commission adopted the right-of-way ordinance, there were many utility companies that were within the right-of-way that were there for free, and we had no enforceable policy in order to properly manage them. And in November of, of sixth of two thousand thirteen, the commission passed the right-of-way ordinance, which gave the city the ability to manage those within their right-of-way. And as part of the audit that was done for the utilities within the right-of-way, there's forty-one of them now, it was identified that some of the utilities that were using Oregon City's right-of-ways were using them at a reduced rate compared to other nearby cities. So, the League of City did a survey, and it was, in relationship to forty-four cities, Oregon cities identified right-of-way as a top four priority, and in two thousand twelve, they completed this survey that encompassed those cities and what those cities were being paid for franchise fees from various utilities. Now, in this study, Oregon City's PGE and Northwest franchise fee percentage is currently three and a half and three percent respectively for each, and based on this survey, Oregon City's franchise fee is, is the lowest in the state. So, nearby cities, including West Lynn, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, Wilsonville, and Portland, they all charge five percent. So, the rate for PGE, I looked through a lot of the older ordinances, and I didn't go prior to nineteen seventy-two, but it's remained unchanged since then. In a similar way, Northwest Natural has remained unchanged since nineteen seventy-eight. So, to give you an example of a rate of one-point-five percent on a fifty-dollar PGE bill, it would increase by seventy-five cents. So, with this simple resolution change, which I'm recommending, Oregon City can realize approximately five hundred thousand dollars per year. So, this begs the question, you know, what is PGE's position? What is Northwest Natural Gas's position? And I've been working with both representatives, and I believe that PGE will, will be presenting after me, Northwest Natural Gas has presented a letter that they would like to have included in the record. In addition to that, PGE needs a ninety days' notice, they've committed to being neutral, and they will provide a letter that explains the fee to. They've committed to being neutral, and they will provide a letter that explains the fee to residents. Northwest Natural Gas, in the same way, will need 90-days' notice. And they've said, and in the letter that you have or will shortly have, they've committed to cooperate with us on the language and how that will appear. That concludes what I have, and I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
I don't have any... For some reason, I'm on here, and I don't think I pressed the request, however, I'm gonna take the time to speak. We couldn't locate it, but I recently saw a listing of the populations of the cities in Clackamas County and the number of jobs in the cities of Clackamas County. My recollection is we have more jobs in Oregon City than the other cities do. Some people might be surprised by that, but the fact is, we have a tremendous service industry here. And much of that service industry is tax-exempt. Either they're nonprofits or they're government. We have Willamette Falls Hospital is located here. We have, the county administration buildings are located here. Most of the public housing owned by the county is located in Oregon City. We have Clackamas Community College here. Is Oregon City's high school, is one of the biggest in the state? Is that right?
Yeah, one of, yeah.
So, it's a large facility. We also have the administrative offices and several of the schools here. None of this property is taxed. And we do not charge our full tax rate here in Oregon City. Many cities have done that. But if we try to deal with the needs and the services that we need to provide to many of these tax-exempt facilities, we'd be subsidizing the citizens of Oregon City, residents of Oregon City, and businesses of Oregon City would be subsidizing that use even more. This is something that everybody that uses either water or natural gas pays for. And that includes, electricity at least, is used by all the facilities I mentioned. I imagine most of the facilities now use natural gas or some similar form of power. And so, we provide services, police services, to the public housing, for example. We had a report from the previous police chief that it exceeded more than $100,000 per year. And this is, I think, one of the prime reasons that we should seriously consider these increases in fees. It's the benefit, really, of being the seat of the county government. It's a benefit in the sense that we do have a lot of jobs here. We're not a bedroom community in that sense. But it also is the price we pay for being a county seat. And we're enabled to meet some of the service requirements, if that's what the next commission chooses to do. This money goes into our general fund, and it's gonna be the next commission that's gonna make the decision how these monies are going to be appropriated. But I just wanted to make the point that being a county seat and having all these tax-exempt properties comes at something of a cost to the city. And we feel that the residents should make all of that commitment themselves, and the businesses.
Well said.
Any comments, any comments from the council?
No, we have a couple citizens...
Okay, William Gifford and Amber Holbeck, would you please come forward? In the order, in the order which I call you, speak. Are you? Is it a, in this case, Amber's gonna speak first?
Nancy's on the phone.
You can use it. You can use it. Just put it back.
Nancy, did you, yeah, go ahead. Who did I call first? No, I called, I called...
William, William, go.
As you said, age before beauty.
I was just being cute. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I really want to support this, and I do support this. I think that this is, there's no such thing as a free ride, that public utilities, as well as all users of public rights of way, have an obligation to pay a fair share, and that fair share, they've been getting a free ride for quite a while. And I think the fact that they are remaining neutral on the subject speaks volumes, the fact that they're not gonna object to this. And I think, Mayor Neely, your comments about the fact that this will be applicable to all of those that are not, I mean, it's a difficult concept for, I think, a lot of people to grasp, with the fact that we don't have the tax base that a lot of other comparable communities do have. But the fact that such as our PMUFA is the same way, and the fact that it is completely across the board, everybody pays, nonprofits pay, governments pay. And the same thing will be true of, because we know that these utilities are gonna raise their rates. But the fact that everybody is gonna be straight across the board, I think this is a fair and equitable thing, and I certainly encourage you to adopt this. It's a fair solution, and it's high time to do it.
Once again, Amber Holbeck with the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to take the time to say thank you, acknowledge you, the City Commission, and our staff for responding to the concerns that came up two weeks ago. You were quick to respond to the concerns. City staff took the time to spell out the changes, spoke with our Government and Economic Affairs Committee, and there were virtually no concerns coming out of that presentation. The time to understand what was coming before the ratepayers through this was important. We appreciated the time that you took to adjust, despite it taking $20,000 more. Certainly do appreciate the time to inform and include us in that process, so...
Thank you.
You.
I meant to say thank you, too.
No further comments at this time.
Was the gas and the PGE people?
Oh, yes. Come forward.
Oh, okay.
Mayor Neely and City Commissioner, my name is Dean Funk. I manage local government affairs for Portland General Electric Company. I'm here to read a letter into the record on Resolution Number 1430, increasing the charges for the use of the right-of-way by certain utilities within the City of Oregon City. I don't know if you all have copies of the letter. I have copies here, if you'd like to have one in front of you right now.
I believe it's...
Is it on that? There we go. Yep, there it is.
Which one?
Yeah.
I see it.
So, we appreciate that the council delayed this matter for two weeks to allow time for stakeholders to provide support or opposition to Resolution 1430, and the opportunity this evening to describe to council our understanding of Oregon law, as well as how we communicate what customers will see on their bill if you begin implementing Resolution 1430. To be clear, PG is neutral on whether to pass the resolution adopting the tax. PG feels it is important to put our process into the record so customers have a clear path back to statutory language should they be interested to understand the charge on their bill. PG wishes to explain the basis for the company's position that the amount PG pays to a city, such as Oregon City, for the use and occupation of the right-of-way for the purpose of providing utility service will be called a franchise fee when it is negotiated between the city and PG and as part of a franchise agreement, and will be called a privilege tax when it is imposed on PG as part of the city's authority under ORS Chapter 221 and separately stated on customer bills. The Oregon Public Utility Commission draws a distinction between charges imposed by a city on an electric utility for the use and occupation of the city right-of-way that do not exceed the 3.5% of gross revenues received by the utility from customers within the city and charges that exceed 3.5%. OAR 860-2240 requires the utility to treat those two amounts differently by including the 3.5% in rates that are spread among all utility customers, no matter where they are located, and charging anything above that only to customers within the city and separately stating that amount on the bills of those customers. While the OPUC does not mandate the name of the charge that PG must place on the bills of customers located within a city that enacts a charge for the use of the right-of-way greater than 3.5%, PG has for decades made a distinction between franchise fees and privilege taxes by calling these two charges two different names. This distinction is also clearly made in the current franchise contract between PG and Oregon City. There are additional reasons why the particular names have been and continue to be used in our franchise agreements and on our customer bills. For many years, all the cities in our service territory have requested that PG pay as a franchise fee the full 3.5% of gross revenues that the OPUC permits PG to spread in the rates and not charge customers directly. And PG has agreed to the amount as a reasonable charge for the use and occupancy of the right-of-way. Additionally, 23 of the 52 cities PG serves, slightly less than half the cities that we do business in, have reserved their franchise agreement with PG the right to impose an additional amount on PG for the privilege of using and occupying the right-of-way. It is not an amount that PG is agreeing to pay to the city as an additional franchise fee. It is an amount that the city may impose on PG, which will be passed on to PG customers within the city. When a city imposes a charge on a utility for the privilege of using and occupying the right-of-way, Oregon law calls it a privilege tax. Since ORS 221-450 describes that financial exaction for the use of the right-of-way as a privilege tax, it was logical that all of our franchise agreements refer to that charge that is imposed on PG by the cities as a privilege tax. Further, this charge functions as a tax, as described in Oregon law, because it is levied primarily for the purposes of raising revenue, and the funds may be expended for any purpose determined by the city council. For the reasons stated above, it is PG's position that what is stated on customer bills should reflect the nature of the charge in question. The privilege taxes referred to as the City of, put in the blank, tax on PG customer bills in every city that charges PG more than 3.5% franchise fee for the use and occupancy of the right-of-way. We do not want to give the citizens of Oregon City the impression that we are treating them any differently than our customers in other cities. Thank you very much, Dean Funk, manager of local government affairs, PG.
Well, thank you for that letter, and I'll pose some questions maybe to our attorney in a bit, in terms of the wordage, but thank you. Nancy, are you with us?
Yes, I am with you. Sorry, Mayor.
Yeah. I don't know if you, are you, you're familiar with the Ordinance 221-456?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask that question again?
The ordinance he referred to, I think, was 221...
It's ORS.
ORS 221...
221-450. Yes, I am, Mayor.
450. The question is, is this a language that applies specifically to utilities such as PGE and Northwest Natural Gas?
Well, there is, as mentioned by Mr. Funk, there is an administrative rule which applies to PGE and Northwest Natural that requires that they pass on any tax or fee or other charge for use of the right-of-way that exceeds 3.5% for PGE and 3% for Northwest Natural. They're required to pass that through as a separate line item on the bill of the customers in the city imposing that charge. So, in other words, when there's a fee, if the commission increases the right-of-way usage fee as proposed tonight, that PGE and Northwest Natural are required to pass that additional fee on to their customers in Oregon City. That is correct. I do not agree with PGE's statement that this fee is a tax. That is a legal question that has not been resolved. And the legislature has been very clear that ORS 221-450, the statute that references privilege taxes, it's not a limitation on city authority. It's specifically stated in ORS 221-415 that cities have independent authority to regulate the use of the right-of-way by electric providers. So, in addition to that, the franchise agreement does not limit the city's authority to implement generally applicable fees and charges. Doesn't require the use of the term "privilege tax." It doesn't limit your authority, nor could it. So, I guess I can pause there and ask if you would like some further clarification.
Actually, my question is about the wording. Is this the wording that utilities themselves use, "privilege tax," or is this something that's spelled out in the ordinance as a term used? And if so, whether it applies only to utilities like PGE and Northwest Natural Gas?
Sorry, thank you for clarifying. I'm having a little trouble hearing, but I've got you this time. The language that is used is not specified in the statute or in the administrative rule. The administrative rule that requires the pass-through specifically says that the utility can choose the language that they want to use.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies it. Any other questions?
Was Northwest Natural Gas gonna talk also?
They got their letter.
That was it?
That was it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any more questions from the commission?
Well...
This email from Nancy Warner, do we need to add that to the record, or is that in the record?
We need to add that to the record.
Does the commission already have this?
Yes, it's on, it was sent to them today.
So, there's an email from Nancy Warner to two different people, dated November 19th. No, sorry, not on, November 19th at 2:00 p.m., so we add that to the record.
Well, I want to... The action requested this, they actually passed a resolution tonight?
Yes.
As I understand, okay. Do I have here a motion?
Well, I have a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I just want to be clear. So, PGE and Northwest Natural have not had an increase since 1972 or 1978, correct?
In the rate.
In the rate. So, but they have had the 3.5% increase each year.
Increase. 3.5 is the base rate, and they've had that for, flat rate, yeah.
That's the flat rate, though.
Right.
Okay. So, you are asking us to approve 1.5% more?
PGE and 2 for Northwest Natural Gas.
So, just those two? And I still have concerns about where that money's going. The mayor said it was general fund. I don't believe it needs to go general fund, but...
That's where it goes to.
However, keep in mind that the next commission will have an opportunity to decide, based on their priorities, where they want to spend that money. But you all recall our budget process last time, and there are several departments where, I mean, staff can just reel off considerably more liability that's being deferred than this revenue will generate. So, there'd be lots of places where the new commission could spend this money, but it won't be enough to meet all the needs, still.
All the franchise, all the franchise fees, right-of-way fees, and so forth do go into the general fund. That's where they go to.
Yeah, that's where they go.
I mean, with the monies, other monies, certain monies come in that are dedicated, and the state distribution of cigarette taxes and so forth are allocated as specific things, but other sources, if I'm not, am I correct there? But those other fees there go into the general fund and always have. And then the commission makes the decision in its budgeting process, and its goal setting is to how those funds are allocated. Commissioner Roth?
I have a question. Is Mr. Funk, is that correct? Does Portland charge a 5%, a 3.5 and a 1.5%?
Please come to the microphone.
Yes, Portland is a unique animal in that they, we do not have a signed franchise contract with them. So, under Oregon law, that is considered a 5% privilege tax, the entire amount.
Okay, can you give me, what I'm looking for is how it's worded in other cities that would maybe be this 3.5, 1.5% split.
In all the cities where there, including Portland, where there is that portion that's designated, or that's called out on the bill, it's a 1.5% city of, name the city, tax. And the 23 cities that have that, have imposed that privilege tax.
Okay.
And Portland's unique, then?
No, they're not unique, actually. There's a few. Gresham is also in that category.
Were they all privileged tax?
Yeah, I really didn't want to distraction, but as a, as a matter of law under 221, although I'm not an attorney, and generally speaking, when we are before a council, we do not, if we bring an attorney, then we insist the other side bring an attorney. And when the other side has an attorney, we do not actually comment on it. So I shouldn't actually comment on the law specifically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
You have a motion.
Now I'm going to do it.
Commissioner Roth, hit the button quick.
I've done it three times now.
Commissioner Roth, pause.
One second. Are you going to read it?
Yeah, ready for the vote?
No, can I, you want me to read it?
You have to read it.
You hit the button.
You hit the button.
It says to read it before you hit the button.
Resolution number 1430, amending the right-of-way usage fees for certain public utilities operating within the city of Oregon City rights of way.
Very good. It was four in favor and one abstention. Oh, no, it changed. It's now four in favor. Okay, I guess that was, anyway, yeah, so it was unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, Commissioner Mum requested that AB be polled for...
Commissioner Roth.
Commissioner Roth requested that Commissioner, one of the commissioners requested that Commissioner AB be polled. And I, since we don't see these very often, I think it's a good idea to get clarification what this means.
Mike...
I want to throw, do I want to throw that to these?
Can I, can I tell you what my concern is?
Oh, sure.
I understand the remonstrance and all of that. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the parties we're talking about.
Okay. So this is the developer of a piece of property off of Holcomb. The grantor is West Ridge Homes, Inc., and Baker, Daniel and Cynthia. And I, I'm unfamiliar exactly with last names on this, but I think it's under West Ridge Homes, Inc. So it runs, this, this is recorded against the property, so it runs with the property.
Mm-hmm.
And would, you know, any future purchasers of these properties would, would be informed of this remonstrance as well. So does that, does that get to what you're asking?
So they are giving up their right?
They're, they, okay, so I can also...
And it goes into the future.
I can also explain the non-remonstrance.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
So, that's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Move by Commissioner Roth, second of the commission.
Wait, wait, we're on item...
No, not the consent agenda, this particular item.
Sorry, this particular item. Move to approve remonstrance?
No.
14 dash...
Yeah.
14 dash...
PB 14-019.
019.
It's a non-remonstrance agreement.
Yeah, it's a non-remonstrance agreement, yeah.
Non-remonstrance.
So I'm not, file number 14 dash 019.
Okay, for, no.
Waiting for Rockies.
No, it's up there.
Oh, okay, just kidding.
With that...
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
We're moving.
My second.
Move by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Paul. And that is unanimous. With that, we're going to communication with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one thing this evening, and that is we are really well underway on the Irma Tinger project near here. And I'm going to ask Scott Archer to give you a quick update on that.
The project continues to move forward. It's going well. It's taking, as projects go, sometimes you get into them and find that things take a little longer than you first anticipated. So we're, the timeline has moved out, but that's no indication of the project not, not being completed. We are in the process of examining a few issues that may, that may cause some, that may cause some minor price increases. We're reviewing those issues and we'll be dealing with those things. But in essence, in general, the project is going well. Mr. Frazier did ask me to mention, Mayor Neely and Commissioner Smith were somehow communicating, there was a communication chain going with our, our project architect, Maya Foti, that one of you had requested a tour and the other one had kind of said, sure, I'd love to go too. So, and we thought it would be good to mention that to the whole commission in case you're interested. The, the date has moved around. We were supposed to meet last week, and then we had the day where the ice hit and some of the folks from Portland couldn't come down. And we're in the process of rescheduling that. And just, just a few minutes ago, I read an email. Looks like we're landing on next Tuesday at 4:00 PM. If any of the other commissioners would be interested in attending that tour, it would help us greatly to know that so we could anticipate, just, just for numbers.
Next Tuesday, the 25th, what time?
Four o'clock, 4:00 PM at, at the Irma Tinger House, obviously. It's under construction and a lot of areas we can't actually get into, but we can at least go through parts of the house and...
Do we need our herd hats?
Uh, yeah, if you have one, bring it in. If not, I think we have some extras, so it would be provided, so. So anyway, commissioners, if any, the rest of you would be interested, please, if you could let me know or let anybody through the city manager's office know, I'm sure that'd be passed along to me. And then David, we were also going to give an update about the end of the Oregon Trail, but I think Commissioner has it.
Just a simple question there. I don't know if the email with, there was an email sent in that chain of emails with an attachment to photographs of various items that have been found in the walls of the Irma Tinger House. I don't know if that went to the whole commission or not.
No, no.
It should, it's pretty ama, I mean, it's, it's pretty cool. It's pretty cool. And I guess I sent, one of the emails back was, was questioning whether or not we're obvious, my hope is that we're saving all of that stuff. I don't know that, but, because in some sense, it's just scraps of wallpaper and some nails and some various other things, but...
It'd be great shadow.
I think, I think to save that, save any of that material, just as a display for when the house is open or when the house gets completed, I think, I hope we're preserving all of that. That's it.
Okay. And then, were there any other questions about that, about the Irma Tinger House? And then just briefly, wanted to mention that we are, we've been doing some work down at the end of the Oregon Trail facility. As you know, we've got some pretty significant deferred maintenance. Mr. Frazier just mentioned a little bit ago, lots of needs in the city, and this is certainly one of those things on the list. We've, we've been working with Clackamas Heritage Partners under this agreement that we've, we've had in place. And they'll be here at your next meeting to give you their annual report, and I'm sure you'll hear about some of this in greater detail. But just briefly, that the city and the Clackamas Heritage Partners have been, have been working together on trying to address these facility issues that we have. And we've got a limited maintenance budget there that we've been trying to leverage and maximize. Clackamas Heritage Partners has put forth some of their own funding, limited as, as though it may be. They've, they've really made a significant effort, and they've had some specific donations from some of their, I think their board members have put forward their own funds to help with some of these projects. And they've leveraged those funds with a number of grant opportunities that they've been successful in, in bringing to Oregon City. So just to let you know that some of these facility items have been slowly but surely, some progress is being made. There's still a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done, but they, they've been a great partner and more than are, more than upholding their commitment in our partnership to reinvest into the facility in a number of ways.
I want to just echo that. Being the city representative on the CHP board, one of the things that was a real concern to the commission when we entered into that new agreement was, you know, this, this hope that CHP would really step up because, you know, we have had a huge and still have huge concerns about some of the maintenance issues at that building. And, you know, having that partnership to move forward, allowing CHP to continue to use that building as long as they're kind of partnering with us in a, in a, in a good way to make sure we're saving that building. And I would say that I'm very impressed with, with the work that the CHP board has done, both kind of soliciting donations and pitching projects really to the city. And last year, you know, they, they put a considerable amount of money from one of their grants into painting the hoops. And this year, doing the outside of the building and continuing on with the backside, it sounds. So I think that I'm extremely impressed by the amount of work that they have done to show a really amazing effort into following through on the commitment that they made when we went into that agreement. And I, I don't see that changing. I see that they're working very hard to expand the board and, and get more involvement and also expanding their partnerships with the, the Grand Ron tribe. And, you know, so they're really doing a lot of work that's not only serving the city in terms of tourism, but saving our buildings. And I think they should be commended for that. You know, it's been incredible to be a part of it and, and to see that work that's happened just in the last two years. Remember, I mean, you just think about two years ago, we had no plan. We had no idea if that building would be able to be reopened. And even if it was going to be reopened, could we start making an effort to start repairing it? Because we thought if we opened it, is that just going to bring the level of the buildings down even more to a point where we have to close the museum again? They're getting visitors in the doors. They're making enough money to set some aside and to put some into the building. I think it's an incredible turnaround. And I've been, you know, extremely critical of CHP in the past. I think what has happened the last two years is absolutely amazing. And I, I just hope that it continues, and I hope that that partnership between the CHP and the city continues.
With that, I'll go ahead and give my report, which is a brief one. We've had closing dates on, on all of our openings on advisory boards. The next mayor will be making those appointments. However, there are two advisory boards in which there have not been sufficient applications at day, to date, so there are effective vacancies. So on the natural resource committee, there are three vacancies and no applicants at this point. And on the historic review board, there are three openings. They are restricted. One of the openings is for a representative from the McLachlan neighborhood. Another one is a large member. Another one is a representative from the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if we've ever put out an email out to them or not.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. Can you ask?
Well, the question was, the chamber reps, have the chamber gotten, received an email indicating that we have a position available for a chamber member?
Um, I, well, I'm not certain. I need to check into it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and make sure they do get that because they may not even be aware that there's a position open on the historic review board.
Okay, okay. I'll look into that.
Okay. Anything, starting from my corner left?
I'm sure. I'll mention a couple of things. The Snowflake Raffle was mentioned earlier, and that is a great thing, sponsored by Main Street, but it's open to all of the businesses that wanted to participate in the city. So that's a wonderful way to buy local and have a chance to win some great prizes. Another thing, Eric Underwood, our economic development director, had a developer forum on November 12th at the Pioneer Community Center. And it was, it was attended greatly by different developers, and it was great to have that conversation and to hear some of their feedback. And there is another one that's going to be scheduled. Is that correct?
Yes, February 1st, part of March.
February 1st, part of March. Okay. And that will just be some, we'll talk about other ideas, some of the ideas that surfaced and maybe some action on some of those ideas. So it was a great step to have that communication going between the development community and the city and citizens. So thank you for that.
Good. Commissioner Roth?
I've got just two things to mention. One is that there's downplaying around here. I'm not sure who does the continuity of operations plan here for the city of Oregon City. Is that the police department?
It's us.
It's who? Police, okay. I've just become aware of a new program from a company called Bold Planning, and they allow you to constantly update your coop plan. And it's really something worth looking into. It's a really nice program because, you know, you have to redo them every so many months. Really, you have to look at the thing, so if you want...
Can you give me the name again?
Bold, B-O-L-D Planning, Inc. And the second thing is, to the next commission that's coming in, if you get an opportunity to interact with Concordia College again, I would highly recommend that that be taken another step this time. They are just getting ready to open their simulation lab. And it's the only simulation lab in the country for homeland security. So the potential there is absolutely tremendous. It's going to, they have their grand opening coming up this week, and I'm going to be going to that. And if we, if there is still a possibility of it coming to Oregon City, it is certainly worth looking at. That's it.
Commissioner Mum?
I just have a couple of things. The mayor and I and John Lewis attended the C4 meetings, and it was a very lively discussion. We were talking about the act, the area on, area...
Commission on transportation.
Area commission on transportation. So it was decided that we were going to form the act, whether we liked it or not, I think. But the mayor put forth the mayor's group. I don't know, did you want to talk about the mayor's letter that you guys did?
Okay, yeah, we'll come back to it.
So he was able to get a little better representation for the cities, I believe, on that. The next thing is, I have Jerry Herman did his report on, or gave us a DVD on The Rivers of Life. And Richard Marlowe, who works or is involved with the Willamette Falls Media Center, said he wanted to give us a better video because Jerry's video wasn't working that night, as you guys might remember. So the videos are from Richard Marlowe with Jerry Herman's blessing. And then also, before we get together again, we're going to have Thanksgiving, so I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And enjoy. And I'm sure I'll have more next meeting.
I've been doing a lot of, going to a lot of tourism meetings. Irma Tinger House group that has been meeting for quite some time to work towards, hopefully of friends of the Irma Tinger organization. That dialogue has been taking place, and will probably come to the new commission at some point with some sort of a recommendation. The Oregon City Tourism Council has had several meetings with our TAP plan with the county and, and have given out the grants or have... and, and have given out the grants, or have chosen the grants that we get with the money that comes in from the county for tourism. Had, have had some conversations with city staff and city manager, with the Tourism Council, of the possibility of how tourism might be dealt with in the future in Oregon City, and, and hopefully that discussion will, will continue, be brought to the commission at some point. Probably, maybe to some degree with our goal session, but, but maybe a little bit beyond that as well. That's pretty much it.
Okay, now I'll come back to the, the situation with the act. Oregon Department of Transportation had gathered representatives from the various communities to discuss whether there'd be a one-act model or a two-act model. A one-act model would have been the metro region, and then the, the parts of Clackamas County and also Hood River would be in a second, in a second act. Clackamas County and Hood River were basically the only ones that had their cities outside of an act, and Hood River wanted to become part of, part of it. And the other alternative is one act that covered all of that area under one, one single grouping. There's no additional monies that go into, into, into transportation from this, this area, but it was legitimately felt that the jurisdictions, the, the, the city jurisdictions outside the metro region wanted a voice, and this is what triggered the whole thing. It was settled on having a one-act model. Monoma Portland area will have eight representatives, Washington County and Clackamas County will have six each, and then Hood River will have four. What had, what was actually presented by, there was no, the, the representatives selected, there was no mayor represented on that committee from Clackamas County. It was a transportation person, and the Clackamas Board of County Commissioners had a representative. Our breakout was, there'd be one person representing the county, one representing the city, and four stakeholders, one of which would be a business owner. The original statement that was given there was selected by C-4. The county representative wanted that stripped, which would have given all the power to the Board of County Commissioners. The, three, actually, three cities got together to draft some language and terms, particularly of how the city representatives would be selected, and a fourth city joined us in that effort. And what we put forward is, the County Board of County Commissioners would select the, their own representatives. The city, there'd be, out of the stakeholder group, that we would have a city, metro city representative, and then we'd have a, another city representative of the stakeholder group that would be from the metro cities. One city representative would be from the rural cities, selected by the rural cities, that is, the cities themselves make that selection. And in the discussion, we then went to the, one of the other three that was not a business one and supported a, a representative of the rural community being selected, that could be from one of the CPOs. They have, they, they would have to, the, C-4 would have to amend the bylaws to permit this, but there was a, I think C-4 really came into a position of wanting to demand their control of it, and not have it dominated by the Board of County Commissioners, which has been done before. What was interesting is that, it was Wes Lynn, actually, that drafted the, the letter that, that the four, the four cities signed upon. Mayor Knapp was there from Wes, from, Wilsonville, I said Wes Lynn, I didn't mean it, it was Wilsonville, and Wilsonville Mayor Tim Knapp actually made the comment that we felt that, that C-4 felt that C-4's recommendations were not considered by the Board of County Commissioners. The chair of the board was there and said, well, give me one example, and a, a board... Give me an example, and the, one of the board, one of the county board commissioners provided the example, so that was, so that was, that was an interesting meeting.
Yes.
And I think the feeling was that finally the cities were gonna get a voice in this process.
Yes, yes.
So, it was a, it was a nice meeting. I, I had actually drafted a memo that I took to, when the three cities met to each other, and it was, I, I wanted to be at the end of my service, be a badass, but they kind of rejected my memo, and went for a more, a more of a...
More of a, more of a, more of a focused effort that was more constructive than my memo was.
So I'm glad that, I'm glad that Wilsonville stepped up and did that.
And did that, yeah.
I think you got beeped.
Not on cable access.
But then...
Well, thank you guys for doing that, the C-4.